No, I'm good. Listen to me, Dad.
She told me we should drive down there.
Oh, my God. Mom, if you're home, I don't have children out there. He never did go back.
It's about 10:00.
Five percent.
And then he called me.
Thank you, Dave. I am glad you're always prepared.
We don't go after that. I said, all they did is make sure I was never going to crap. What's gonna happen? I'm not gonna respond. He goes, maybe I should just... I said, that would probably be too good. Do you want to look at this? I said, because I'm like... We can just go back to Dave.
What's her name?
Zane and Timmy.
Timmy.
Chairman.
You hear Freddie Flott that? Freddie Flott, Cav's broadcaster? Yeah, I think you were Cav's staff.
Man, that was on the best football game. They chaffed my guns up. Yeah, they're running big shots.
Alvin Kamara. Alvin Kamara.
Kamara?
Kamara.
I'm gonna try my best. You got my credit back.
Okay.
Forty years old.
I'm not looking at the herd. I just don't even sure, you know, this side looks the best. Either, either side. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Try to get the good side, Derek.
I hear that often. I still think I prefer this side. My pictures done, you know.
All right, you're gonna call me in order, please. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, need a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty seventh?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty seventh.
I wasn't here, but how do you...
I'll second it.
Brett?
Oh, it's Dave.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Roadside protest report?
Yes, sir. Okay, the roadside mower had been down. There was two hydraulic hoses that were broke. They were metal hydraulic hoses that we had to order through Alamo. They were hard to get, but we were able to obtain them, kind of put back on the machine yesterday. The roadside mower was back out.
Had put on them?
Yes, it's on. It's on. Oh, they were broke.
Did you guys do it?
Yes, we did. It was fixed. I'm sure they were not cheap. They were a little four hundred dollars to get those hoses. But they had to come from Alamo, especially. They couldn't go just to Tractor's Park.
Loaded the last two days with it, right?
Loaded the last two days with it. Finally back into the roadside mower, so. Been down for a while. But that's up and going. So I talked with Perrin Asphalt. Met with them Friday. They're looking about moving machines in there this week. They're wanting to start this week grinding up Harvest Hills. Once they grind it out, or mill it out, they're gonna go ahead and replace the curbs. Once the curbs are replaced, then they're gonna repay them. So shouldn't take them too, too long. Shouldn't mean it's anybody that way. And then I stopped in Sureco. Looks like they're putting a little bit more. They got the, actually, they kind of created some of the pads today. As soon as that parking lot gets paid, we're gonna go ahead forward with playing road.
Yeah, the guy was on the roller when I went by less than an hour ago.
Yeah, they've been, they've been working on it pretty good.
When they gravelled out.
The weather's been cooperating looking really well. So as soon as that goes, we'll go with it. And then we, they're gonna start chip and seal in Klein and Bill's this week. Should start on that Thursday. It might get pushed back a day. We'll see about the weather. Also, with chip and seal, I was wanting to see, we need to get Sanford and Harrah done this year. If, I believe Dave spoke with Joanne to see if we had any more money. We could get those two done before winter this year.
I did speak with Joanne today. You know, she wanted to wait to see if we had enough money. Last meeting, she wanted to hold on. So I told her it's gonna be right around that fifty thousand dollar mark, under the fifty thousand dollar mark. And she said that we were okay with doing that. So I'll make a motion, and I think, do we want to try to get Greenwood in there also?
As long as we can stay underneath that number, I think, yes.
And, okay, and he gave us a quote for thirty-seven, twenty-five?
Correct.
Greenwood. Okay, I'll make a motion for Martuccio, Chip and Seal. Martuccio, Chip and, you know, Chip and Seal, Sanford Road, Harrah Road, and Greenwood. Greenwood, just a little tiny road, in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
Can I ask one quick question before we approve it? Did you, what was the hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure? Was it for all three rows? I thought you said a hundred and fifty thousand. It's just forty-six.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand, okay. I will second that motion.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Okay, and then the operator, I mean, they did, they moved one piece of equipment into the park. Not as much as I'd like. I'd like them to get one yesterday, but I guess we're on their diet there. So they are, looks like there's some activity going. And then we have not had any funerals since last meeting, and we will be pouring footers tomorrow at the cemetery. That's all I have.
You're doing footers for...
For headstones.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for...
We do it twice a year, spring and fall. You know, so I get the, I get the foundation orders. We dig them till we're full.
But no one's, no one's...
Buried?
Yeah, no one's in there yet, though.
Oh, no, they're there.
Oh, they are? Oh, okay, gotcha. Gotcha, okay. Thinking, yeah, you're gonna put them in for somebody hasn't bought the lot yet, though.
No, there are people that do. They, they buy the lot, and they go ahead and put their stones in.
Oh, I got you, yeah, yeah. So somebody has the lots, then?
Yeah.
They're not just, okay, that's what I meant.
Okay. Dave, I got a question. When are you guys are done? When's the last day? When is the park closed?
It's usually not till November, November first.
Usually once the weather really changes.
Yeah.
If the union's in there, can they work after we close the park or so?
Yes.
Like, it's...
It'll be hard to plant grass, though, in November. It shouldn't take them long to do what they have to do up there. I mean, I'm not...
It's gonna be a weak job. It's gonna be hard to plant in October.
Maybe a little longer than a week.
Well, we jump on it, you know.
Yeah, I agree. It shouldn't take, sir. It's just my little optimism, which is focus. Yes.
Anything else?
Bill?
All right. Anything for...
Bill?
All right, move on. Zoning, zoning report?
Jordan was on vacation this week, and we're still working on the, we gave you guys for the subdivision work that Portage County needs back. Just start on that. Just answer all calls.
Anything else we're done? I'm not too far off. Did Jordan give you the equipment to record the minutes for the park committee meeting this Thursday?
I have it downstairs. Do you want me to give it to you?
Well, maybe. Because I was gonna check with the other trustees. Thursday, I do have a, another, something I have to attend. If you guys can, well, when you guys can fill in for me, that'd be appreciated. If not, I can have somebody else record it and just give Kevin a briefing before the meeting of what's, what's going on. Tammy Toddler will be in for an interview for the open position. She is the only candidate. They may try to make a motion to approve her, not doing a full-blown interview, because they've already met her and they're familiar with her reputation in the community and her ability to plan events. So we'll see how that turns out. Let me know if either one of you guys want to make that meeting or can make that meeting for Thursday.
Can you want to?
I cannot make it Thursday. Guess it's on me.
Doesn't have to be. Maybe we'll do the other trustee there, but...
Your shoulders break on bigger every week, man. Thanks. Oh, I think I'm gonna massage them because they're kind of tired.
Yeah, I'll make that.
Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you, Joe.
I'll give you the recorder.
It's just down in the office, right?
Okay. You know, you just hold the button down.
Mm-hmm. It'll just rate real fast.
Or you can do that.
Yeah. All right, anything else we're done?
No. Moving on. Fire chief's report?
I really have nothing to report. Busy week. Okay, can you just squat?
Okay, move on to township fiscal officer?
You can tell them.
Any motion to pay bills on record?
I'll make a motion to pay bills on files with clerk.
I will second that motion.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
We've got about seven minutes before we have our public hearing, so...
What's NOPEC? You want to get the NOPEC?
Yeah.
I just want a NOPEC grant, Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, which is NOPEC Energized Community Grant Program, NECC grant. Resolution, a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council twenty nineteen Energized Community Grant. Whereas the township of Rootstown, Ohio, is a member of the Northeast, is a member of NOPEC, and is eligible for one or more NOPEC NECC grants as provided for in the NECC Grant Programs Guide Line. And whereas the township has previously entered into a grant agreement with NOPEC Inc. on January one, twenty nineteen, to receive one or more NECC grants, whereas the township wishes to receive one or more NECC grants for twenty nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Township Trustees, Rootstown Township, County Portage, and State of Ohio that Section one, this Board of Trustees, the Township, the Board, finds and determines that it is the best interest of the township to accept the NECC grants for twenty nineteen and authorizes the President of the Board to accept the NECC grants' funds. Section two, this Board finds and determines that all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this, of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this Board and at all deliberations of this Board and any, and of any committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section three, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare of the township, whereas, excuse me, wherefore this resolution shall be in full force and affect immediately upon its adoption and approval by the President of the Board of the Town Trustees of this township, dated adopted September tenth, twenty nineteen. This is, this is a formal resolution for us to accept a grant from NOPEC, which we've done, this is our third, second year?
This is your second year. Think it's in the amount of approximately twenty-six thousand?
About twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand, yeah. So we did it last year. We've escrowed that money, and we're gonna do the same thing this year, we'll escrow it. Then next year, we'll get it all together and make a big purchase, I guess. So I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution.
I'll second that.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Could you give me the resolution number, please?
Twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen dash one four five.
Go to Joanne, and then she'll get you a copy.
Yes, you can. I will escrow, I will contact NOPEC, if, if what happens to be done, you have to escrow. It has to be done by October thirty-first. I will let you guys know at the next meeting that, that was done.
Julie, could you have Joanne get a copy of that to Brett as soon as possible?
Yes.
So we can get that. There you go.
Speaking of that, the NOPEC grants, from our last meeting, we talked about, of the, of the, the community grant that they offered the township. Everything's been paid out except for the one that goes for the light up Rootstown, which the Chamber of Commerce is managing. I did send him an email asking, hey, what, you know, it's, it's online, it shows his payment pending, but it's not, it's not been sent. So I'm going to contact the guy who's the grant guy instead of the, the NOPEC contact who was in here. I'll contact the, the grant contact and see what's going on. I sent the other guy, the other, our NOPEC contact to the community. I sent him an email saying that, you know, there's, there's two things going to the Chamber of Commerce. One's for the expo, and one's for this light up Rootstown, two separate accounts and all that. So I haven't heard back from him. I was wondering, maybe that's some confusion, but we'll find out, so. I'll contact them, and then I'll let you know when you, if someone's asking you about it, so.
Joe, just, we have one minute. What were the, we was, we got fifteen hundred dollars, and there were three, there was the more, they get five hundred for the more they parade? What was the second one?
The expo?
The expo, and then the...
The chamber puts on, and then the light up Rootstown.
That's right. The expo, okay, thank you.
The, the chamber, just to give you a quick update on that, light it up Rootstown. The chamber actually has, you know, a couple donations already. They went away from all the donated lights from everybody, and they went to, they're going to all commercial. And I think one of the first things they're doing is their, their goal is to raise four thousand dollars to get two commercial-grade strands of lights that, to do the tree, and then I think even the town hall, so. The, historical society asked me about that, because, you know, they've been, for years, they've been doing the town hall, and I said, hey, we're the mayor, you know, contact them, work together with them, you know? Exactly, exactly. But I know they, I know they, they've done, like, the wreaths and the windows. Yeah. Stuff, so. I don't know why that would have to stop.
Would have to discontinue, yeah. You're doing that, yeah. John Michael across the street, Michael Fabricating, is fabricating brackets to put on the utility poles and attach the bracket, the brackets will stay on the poles year-round, and then he has other brackets that will connect to that with the wreaths, and they're intertwining lights inside the wreath, and they're, and they're solar-powered, so they'll be lit up throughout, and he's also going to create other brackets to go on, have a bracket for the Lions Club to put their flags on, so we'll have one bracket for, for vault that will be very nice, so. Okay, that's it. We will, I'm going to make a motion to open our public hearing for zoning amendments twenty nineteen dash zero zero eight through twenty nineteen dash zeros, zero one five.
I'll second that motion.
Brett?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. At the July sixteen, twenty nineteen zoning commission meeting, a motion is passed to recommend the following amendments to the zoning resolution. These are also passed to the prosecutor's office and regional planning. Section, I don't know if I can start to talk here. Section one fifty dot zero two Bravo definitions. This is a new definition, project area in a commercial or industrial area, the part of the lot which is being utilized for building or development based on the submitted plot plan. This may or may not include the entire parcel. So that's just a new definition we're gonna put in there to help support the rest of the resolution. So I will make a motion that we accept this definition to the zoning resolution.
I'll second that motion.
This is zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash, there was a mistake, did I say that?
Roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Oh, sorry about that. Do you have any comments from the committee on that? Talked a little bit there. On, just on this definition?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, moving on to zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash zero zero nine. Section six forty dot zero seven hotel term and extension of variance. This is a change to the current reading, so it will read, this, the, the first couple sentences of the new term and extension of variance. There should be no modification of variances except by further consideration of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Area variances shall not expire once they have been granted by this Board of Zoning Appeals. Use variances shall expire one year from the date of their enactment unless prior thereto construction has begun in accordance with a granted variance. And then the rest will remain the same. Actually, yeah, the rest is the same. Is there any questions on that?
I do. Just some further clarification. I know we, and that is, Mark can fill it a little bit, too. The use variance, I know there was a issue with the, is it that the application has to be finished within a year? Because, or is it...
The project, project has to be started.
Has to be started. Because, like, the one use variance that was done by the ZBA, I think it was for Ed Wilson's thing. That was for split facts, right?
No, that was for duplex.
For duplex? That was a use variance now?
And he didn't start the footer until after. He, he received his building permit six months after the zoning permit, and then his, built, our permit expired, then the building permit expired because it was from two thousand seventeen, and the building department issued a new building and skipped over top of us, so it was, it was an error of the building departments, and he was, he was all right with it. Everything's straightened.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, it's, it talks about the use variance shall expire one year from the date of enactment, but the use variance, in that case, there's difference in it being started. Once they grant the variance for use, then would that, would there be an instance, like, a fence or something like that, where it would go on?
The fence would be an area type thing because it's placed where it is. The use could be a conditional use for, to open from eight to eleven, or it could encompass a whole bunch of stuff, and if somebody doesn't act on that in that time period, then it expires.
What this change ultimately does is clarifies the difference between...
Starting.
No, between the variances, between a use variance and an area variance.
Right.
So they, they used to say just variances shall expire, but that's not how...
They want, they wanted to separate it because there was some confusion on what was going on.
I guess my question, and I'll, we can talk about it later, was just the fact that the use itself can continue on its perpetuity, it's just that the project has to be started within a year. Or they have to reapply for, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that hasn't changed yet?
That hasn't changed.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed change to section six forty dot oh seven hotel as read.
I'll second that.
Any questions from the committee?
Okay, roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Okay, and then, section, is this a zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash zero one zero, section three twenty dot oh nine, supplemental requirements for planned residential developments? Is this thing, that's the same? We end up adding, the zoning commission added, this one sentence, all downspouts, footer drains, and surface drains shall connect to storm sewers. So this is a result of the...
Yeah, definitely.
Development, yeah, thanks. I couldn't, couldn't figure it out, so. So that's just an additional, so. Is there any questions on that? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment change to section three twenty oh nine, supplemental requirements for planned residential developments.
I'll second that.
Questions from the committee? Okay, roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. All right, moving on to section, is this a zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash zero one zero, section three twenty dot oh nine, supplemental requirements for planned residential developments? Is this thing, that's the same? We end up adding, the zoning commission added, this one sentence, all downspouts, footer drains, and surface drains shall connect to storm sewers. So this is a result of the...
Yeah, definitely.
Development, yeah, thanks. I couldn't, couldn't figure it out, so. So that's just an additional, so. Is there any questions on that? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment change to section three twenty oh nine, supplemental requirements for planned residential developments.
I'll second that.
Questions from the committee? Okay, roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash zero one one, section three four zero, that's, that, that, the, section three forty dot zero nine delta, accessory use regulations for late districts. This adds the additional regulations for accessory buildings, D one, it adds to the end of this. I'll just read the whole thing. Accessory buildings that are detached from the principal building shall comply with the setback requirements of schedule three forty dot oh nine, and should be located a minimum of seven feet from the principal building. This is the addition. Except carports, which have no minimum spacing requirement from the principal building. Any questions on that?
You do it. No.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept the amendment to section three forty dot oh nine delta, as read.
I'll second that.
Questions from the...
You got it.
Roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Zoning amendment twenty nineteen dash zero one two, section three ninety dot zero three, Charlie and Delta, specific standards for conditional uses. This change changes the height of a building. Proposal reads as follows, the height of a non-residential building permitted as a conditional use in a residential district shall not exceed fifty feet. Used to be thirty-five, now fifty, except that church spirals, spires, cupolas, domes, towers, and flight poles located upon or constituted as an integral part of the institutional building may be erected to a height not to exceed seventy-five feet when the building is setback from each lot line at least one foot, or each foot of additional building height above fifty feet, which was thirty-five, when permitted by the Zone Board of Appeals. So this is, this is kind of, there's a lot of spots where thirty-five has been increased to fifty feet, so we'll probably run to two or three of these without, throughout this, so. Any questions?
No.
Okay, make a motion, we accept the amendment to section three ninety oh three, Charlie and Delta, as read.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Section three ninety, oh, oh three D, okay, that was C. I figured out there. This is, section D is specific development standards, and this is number six from that. Reach grading and surface drainage provision shall be prepared, excuse me, prepared by registered engineer and reviewed or approved by the Portage County Engineer where applicable. The change will be, grading surface drainage provision shall be prepared by registered engineer and reviewed or approved by the Portage County Engineer, Rootstown Township Zoning Department, and/or Rootstown Township Road Department where applicable. So that's, gives us a little more, as a township leeway on grading and surface drainage. On the motion that we accept the change to section three ninety oh three, Delta, as proposed. I'll second. Comments from the committee?
Okay, roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Section three ninety, I'm sorry, zoning amendment twenty nineteen dot zero one three, section three ninety dot oh six golf, commercial recreation, outdoor, and riding stables, swimming pools, and golf courses. That's the title of that. G proposal. This is the same as the other one, changing a height of thirty-five to fifty feet. G three reads, all structures, including lighting fixtures, shall have a maximum height of fifty feet. I'll make a motion, we accept the change to section three ninety dot oh six G as proposed.
I'll second. All right, Dave, second it.
Questions from the committee?
Okay, roll, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye. Zoning amendment twenty nineteen dot dash zero one four, section six ten dot oh three alpha, zoning certificate application requirements. Okay, this adds, it adds one sentence in here, number four. The current four and five will bump up to five and six, so after three is a new four, and it reads, a permit shall be required for tying any and all storm water into a storm sewer. A hole shall be drilled for access into the top half of the pipe, and a rubber connection boot shall be installed and sized accordingly.
No, I do have a question on that.
Okay. Yeah, okay, hey, go ahead.
So who is gonna be the permitting agency? I mean, would that be the zoning or would that be the road department?
It'll be us permitting and him inspecting.
Gotcha, okay.
I have one, you done Dave?
Yes.
I have one more additional question then. Is this based on a plan? What if there is no stormwater, nothing to tie it into, then it has to be run to the street? Or what, does it have to be tied into?
If they go large rural, it would run to the ditch. Then there is no pipe to tie into. If it's in a subdivision that has storm sewers, then... What we didn't want was somebody just gouging it with a sawzall or something, sticking a pipe in and then licking around it and washing out and that kind of stuff.
It gives you a little more control on, on the water flow, where water's going and...
I guess my question was, the sentence reads, "A permit shall be required for tying any," it's just, "any and all storm water into a stormwater sewer." But it doesn't say, I don't think it deals, it doesn't say before, I think it had said per the plans, if there was a plan. In this case, if there is anything tied into, shouldn't there be something that says? Or is that self-implied? And I could, you could say it's implicit. I wouldn't make that deal out of it, but it's something we can make a small change to add when...
There's people in their backyards. We can't hear you guys.
Somebody's draining their backyard, that's not gonna be the plan. That needs to be tied in. Instead of the road, you don't have that really.
Are you, you want...
Roger.
Roger, answer that?
Read it again.
Number four reads, "A permit shall be required for tying any and all storm water into a storm sewer." We're out here now.
That's meaning that they have to get a permit before they can tie into any storm sewer. If you're rural and you're out in the backyard of something, you're not gonna get a permit to tie into a storm sewer.
Cause you don't have a storm sewer.
That's right, I mean, it could be implied that, but we maybe, if somebody else wanted to add something, I wouldn't say that would wrong either. I mean, it's implicit, but we have any and all, sometimes it's...
Any connection, I, I take that...
To a storm sewer.
Yeah. An actual...
An actual basin and or like a city sewer type setting. Is, is tie-in, I mean, anybody else, if you're in a rural area, you're not tying, you're not taking it any more than ten feet from the building most of the time.
And most of the time you don't have a storm sewer to tie into anyway, so...
Exactly.
Yeah, and I kinda get that, Roger, I mean the...
I mean, I'm just saying, it's just, it is kinda general.
It's implied, I'm assuming that, you know...
It's more for development, developments that have... So also so you don't have somebody just running a, some pipe that they found somewhere and then cut a hole so into a storm sewer and have it drip into it and then, you know...
I guess that'd be a...
Freeze issue, what are you afraid of?
I'm not sure that I am afraid of anything, I just wasn't, you know, I just threw it out there because it's kinda, we're applying that, like you said, maybe that's fine. We're applying that only when there's something to tie it into, otherwise, just run it to the street.
Well, that's what it says, Brett, it says, "When you're tying into a storm sewer." If you're running it out on a rural ground, you're not tying it into a storm sewer. So then the permits would be grabbed and then that would allow us to have eyes on how they tie it into a storm sewer. Like he said, without cutting a hole where all the dirt goes around and ends up filling up the sewage line half full of crud.
So, yeah.
Okay, but we're not really addressing the situation where they're not tying it into the storm wire. Let's say they're running out back or they're running into the neighbor's yard.
Correct, correct.
That's not what that is, right, that's not what that is implied.
Those are everything, cause I know some of the issues I thought that would have been was that they weren't, not tied in, but they're also flooding out their neighbors, their front yards or something.
That's a different story, yeah.
We're not dealing with that issue right now.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Good, good. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the amendment to section 610.03 Alpha as proposed.
I'll second that.
Any questions from the committee? Okay, roll call please.
Brett.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Zoning amendment 2019 dash zero one five? Section 620 dot oh seven Bravo? Review criteria for planned residential developments. This is adding into number seven only. This is under section Bravo, the title section Bravo is final development plan. For final development plan, the zoning commission shall determine that. And number seven reads as follows. Adequate provision is made for storm drainage within and through the site so as to maintain as far as practical, practical, practicable usual and normal swells, water courses, and drainage areas. The following, and then this has added footer drains, downspout drains, and surface drains. And the rest of this is already existing. It shall comply with the applicable regulations in this resolution, any other design criteria established by township, or any other government entity which may have jurisdiction over such matters. So this kinda ties in what we just... That these guys have to go through the right, the right order for the storm drainage. Questions, Dave?
I don't have any questions on that.
Question then. Okay, make a motion to accept the amendment to section 620 dot zero seven B as proposed.
I'll second.
Questions from the committee? Roll please.
Brett.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Okay, make a motion to exit the public hearing at, uh, six oh four. Second?
I'll second.
Roll please.
Brett.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Okay, back to the agenda here. Move the citizens' comments. Purpose of citizens' comments is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda or regarding items that do not include a public hearing. A time length three minutes, purposes and shall apply, please state your name and address for the record. Step front, sir.
Dorothy Hurd, Sanford Road. A question for Bill. I didn't have, but I do now.
Get addressed with us. Yeah, it comes to us.
Oh, okay, is it possible for a person to purchase a cemetery lot in a designated place before they die?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I mean, if you like, and most, most people do.
Under the oak tree or next to the water bucket or something, yeah.
Well, ten years ago, we didn't have pre-sale lots. We do now.
Yeah, we do now, yeah, yeah. Mr. Hurd?
I noticed that the minutes are updated. Is it possible to have a, it put on a computer in a time and manner? In other words, this is Tuesday. Is it possible to have this one put on, let's say by Friday?
No. Oh, can you state your name and address for us, please?
Chavano.
And your address?
Forty-one ten Marx Avenue, Ritztown.
Thank you, I mean, I know that, but...
Are you talking, um, the meetings that were, that we approved tonight? Or are you talking tonight's meetings?
This is, this is for the twenty-seventh. In other words, most generally, unless I'm looking at it wrong, we get one per month.
It should be two, but, but this one won't be, this, August twenty-seventh won't be put online until we approve it tonight. So now it will go to the webmaster to put online, now that's been approved. So it's, it's those...
Yeah, but I mean, sometimes it's two, two weeks before it, uh...
It gets up, gets online? That happens sometimes, depending on, on the workload, whether it gets sent, you know, depends of whoever sends it to her, you know. They don't do it on Tuesday, maybe it gets done on Friday, and then the webmaster's out till next Wednesday. So there's a lot of, a lot of things in motion on that. We can't, I, I can't give you a definite time that, you know, it gets submitted then and it goes online then. There's just too many variables for that.
Joe, is it possible though, anybody that wants the minutes, they can stop by the, they can contact Jordan, once they've been approved, even though they have been sent to them, can somebody stop by?
Contact Joanne.
Joanne and get a copy of them.
Yeah, once, yeah, once we approve the minutes, then, then they'll be, you know, accessible, prior to going online.
How would I do that?
Call the fiscal officer and request it for that.
Her information is on our webpage.
Okay.
Anything else, Dave? Okay, Rebecca? Graham? Dr. Van?
I would like to salute Joe and Brett and the park commission for the grant that you've been getting. And I, I, I think that's great. I would like to revisit the conversation we had last year about grants and getting Jordan help or using an interns KSU person or Todd Pete's person to help get more grants, not particularly referring to other ODNR grants that are available, that you may hopefully be working on. And that's particularly the ones that are available for trails that are twenty-five or fifty percent, uh, township contribution, or even the federal government legacy project. Is there anyone working on those? Is there anyone that can help Jordan apply for them if not? And do you all think you're a good idea?
I think grants are always a good idea.
Yep. And, and the regional planning commission does have a grant writer. So we have used them, that's who we're going through with this current grant.
Yes, and...
We've worked with them.
The other ODNR grants, I've heard...
Yeah, there's, there's numerous ones out there, and a lot of them have, as we have one in, in, in the pipe, we can't go for another one yet. So that one has to be approved. And if you do too many, you can do them every year, but sometimes your, your qualification numbers aren't as high because they wanna spread it around. So we can't be giving Ritztown the grant every year.
I understand that, but some of them are state funded, some are federal funded.
Correct.
They're different sources. Do they compare notes on what you applied for?
The regional planning, the, the grant writer, they have, they have a list, it's like four or five pages long, and then we can look and say, they have it for arts, and I mean, you know, for all kinds of different things, so...
If I translate that correctly, the regional planner then streams us out because we've already applied?
No, they help us with the application process. And then when it goes to ODNR, then they, they look at all the submissions, and then they, they weigh each submission depending on how the application... Yeah. Yeah, they either give it to us or they don't.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna say they prevent...
Right.
Applying, that's, that's not correct, cause we, we apply, we can apply a lot, but you get dinged, you know, if we just got a grant, you know, they, they do try to spread it out a little bit. It's counting, they, they basically, specifically, the nature works grant.
For the ODNR's prejudice to those that have not, have that many applications in order to distribute, uh, throughout the state.
No, I, I think, like, Portage County has allotted X amount of money for, like, the nature work grant.
Yeah.
And then, all twenty jurisdictions in Portage County give you opportunity to go after a hundred thousand dollars.
For example, the trails grant is not county specific. Trails grant applies to all, the whole entire state.
Yeah.
And I'm hearing you say that ODNR still puts us aside because we've got the other application in progress.
No, that, that's a separate grant.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda focusing on the nature works grant that we've been, that we got last year and that we're seeing this year. But other grants, yeah, we could submit for any other grant that ODNR has. They don't block us because we have one for nature works. They might have XYZ grant that we can... We don't have to, but, but they, their grant writer helps us quite a bit getting all the paperwork together. They're like, okay, we need this, us doing it, we can do it ourselves, but if we leave something out, boom, that's, you know, that's a check mark against us. So their grant writer knows all the Xs and all the cross the Ts and dot the Is, so...
It's supposed to be a professional.
Yeah.
Lastly, can we ask regional planning to reply for these...
Yeah, 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 absolutely. That's why I'm hoping that the, the, the park commission is looking at that, cause I brought that up here. Here's the list of all the, the, the grants that are available, so...
Thursday.
We're kind of, yeah, we're kinda, that's kinda my mentality on the park commission, is you guys do the legwork, you look for these, and we are here to help facilitate getting whatever is required, the minutes and, you know, authorizations and things.
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, we have, make sure we bring that up on Thursday if I don't remember.
Can I add one more point, Joe?
Sure.
And I, and I got this, Portage County commissioners contacted all three of us, and we've contacted Kevin, it's gonna be on the next agenda for our next park committee meeting, through Kevin, is... It's to the local subdivisions in Portage County regarding revolving loan fund project submission process. Where regional planning, this is maybe, and the county commissioners are trying to coordinate some of these type of issues with helping local communities get funding for parks, et cetera. They want a list of the parks, you know, priority projects, which I talked to Kevin, and they want that submitted by September twelfth. They didn't give us much time, but in part, they just want, we have to notify them of the bathrooms and the trails. And then based on that, we could continue to, they're gonna help us develop ideas and look at ways to get funding, I believe. It'll be the first meeting, so we are looking at that, and we are working with the county commissioners hopefully, and regional planning, and other ways to get funds for projects, so...
But to, to kinda piggyback on that, we're kind of held right now with, with funding, because a lot of these funds need it done within a year. So some of the things we can't really jump on, because we're still waiting for the operators union to finish up what they have to. Then we can have a better full plan of, when they're done working up there, now we can put the trails in, we can get a better idea of width, depth, length, how much it's gonna cost us now, and you know, we can submit the grant that way. Right now, we're kinda, you know, what, four years later, still waiting for that to get done, and, I mean, I've been chomping at the bit for, you know, getting these, getting these grants in, but we're kinda being held back right now. So as soon as they're done there, then it's gonna be, you know, knock, 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 you know, let's, let's get it. Now on top of that, a lot of the grants are like you say, a fifty-fifty or an eighty-twenty mix, and, and yeah, we don't have that kind of funding right now. So we're trying to find the things that are really gonna get us the most bang for the buck, so...
And more, can I have one more point? Cause Joe also did provide me with a booklet with grants in it, and I did contact those, the people that were giving those grant monies. And a lot of those grants are for bigger projects, like connecting large pathways. And we are a small park, and we're looking at maybe a little more of a loop type grants, which are through nature works. So you gotta be careful just when you see grants out there, they're not necessarily, I mean, they're giving money away, but they're not always just giving free money away without getting something in return for it. So those type of grants that you may see online, different books, maybe that won't always be applicable to places like this, but they're always a good starting point. And I did reach out, and we're gonna continue to reach out as we develop this park, cause we all wanna see it developed as a community park.
Alright, thanks. Vera, I'm sorry, jumped over here, I think, okay? Rebecca, man?
Hello, Rhonda Berry, Stony Creek, Surville. I was here a month ago and asked you guys to explore if a broken catch basement at the bottom of my driveway caused any of my undermining. But you guys did do an exploratory dig, so I'd like to know if there's a report on that. And it looks like in the minutes, it was stated that it wasn't a township problem and, and how that was come up with, why it wasn't related to a broken catch basement.
Do you wanna touch on this, or do you wanna...
I will definitely answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. What we found out, I removed the concrete, and we followed, what we did, we followed the undermining to the source. Source looked like, and I spoke with Larry at the Portage County engineer, but I didn't make it on my own. It looked like the sanitary sewer had settled from initial insulation, which created a void from the very beginning. So whenever that, however long your house has been there, twenty years almost? There's been a void underneath your driveway, so water has been going down through, this is something happened overnight, this is a twenty-year project that's been happening underneath your driveway. The hole at the bottom, down by the curb, was created from the water coming from underneath the driveway. When water gets back behind the curb, it freezes, it will, it will push, and that's what it did. It pushed the curb out. We have holes in catch basins constantly. It's something that we see a lot at, you know, no idea anything was going on underneath anywhere until we had those major rainfalls this year. After the exploratory dig, we, we did determine that the sanitary sewer sunk caused your problem, so...
So my rainwater that went down my driveway caused the catch basement, right?
Correct.
Based on, you think it froze?
Absolutely, water, water getting behind the curb.
My water caused a six, a four-foot by a four-inch by six-inch wide tunnel along your road to catch bases?
Four foot.
That's how long that tunnel was?
By six, yes, yes, the water coming down underneath the driveway.
That's just a... That's just implied?
Did one hundred percent cause all that.
And that's implied?
That is, yeah.
Plus, the soil was mostly sand, too, it looked like.
All the soil by your driveway was filled.
What do you call soil, I just call it sand?
So that's, no, you're right, that doesn't matter. You can use whatever they want. But if you have a water problem underneath your driveway, which we didn't know about, that sand's not helping you at all.
Right.
That's not what you're going to use. You're going to use premium fill. Anybody will use premium fill. One gentleman in Cobblestone, had the same issue, same exact issue you had. His driveway did collapse from a sunken sanitary sewer line. He had to replace his driveway. Same exact thing.
And he is actually in that business?
He is in the concrete business.
Anything else, then?
It's not over, bud.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Trustees, old business. Okay?
No, I don't have any.
All right, moving on, new business trustees?
I have none.
Okay. With that, finally, I'd like to introduce Fay Nicholson from the U.S. Census Bureau. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you.
If you can come up here, yeah. You're a pretty busy lady, aren't you?
Oh, yes, I have been.
She's, she's a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau's Philadelphia office, which oversees the decennial census in nine states, including Ohio.
Thank you.
While you're handing that out, just go for it.
Do you see how big the area she covers?
Nine states.
I actually cover.
Look how busy she is, look at her shoes. She's comfortable, man, she's loaded.
I actually is. Is this okay?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I actually, I'm sorry. I actually cover Portage County and Northern Summit, but I am in the Philadelphia region, which covers nine states. And I'm part of, and of course, Ohio is part of that. So I'm part of the Philadelphia Regional Census Center. And like the trustee said, I am a partnership specialist. And part of my job is to get out into the community and educate, encourage, and engage the community to participate and respond to the census. And so we're doing this this early. And we're in the educational phase right now. We're in the educational phase until September. So just to let you know what's going on right now, you may see some people in your neighborhoods. They are address canvassers. And so the only thing that they're doing is just verifying, like, structures are there, addresses are there, buildings are there. They're doing nothing else. They, they shouldn't be asking you any questions or anything. They're just verifying. And so they'll be doing that until October. And law enforcement already knows, they've been contacted, the Sheriff's Department. So they know, the, um, the police, they know that these people are out there. They should have a badge and some, and some other identical, identifiable information with them, like their bags. So we are just asking people to make sure that they respond because it's so important. We've been doing this since seventeen ninety. It's part of, it's a, it's a mandate in our, in our constitution under Article One, Section Two. It's part of our civic duty. And it's one of two ways that we can make sure that our voices are known, by voting and responding to the census. And there are four ways that the census really impacts us. One is by apportionment. It determines how many seats we're going to get in the House by population. The last decennial census, we lost two seats, so we don't want to lose any more seats. Also, funding. The federal government distributes more than six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars throughout the fifty states, counties, cities, townships. And we want to make sure that Portage County gets its fair share. So that's why I'm out here and, and talking to everybody. And also, funding impacts programs that affect children, Health and Human Services, infrastructure, so much. Hospitals, emergency services. And so, you know, if we don't respond, you know, we have to live with those numbers for ten years. So it's really important. And also, planning. It helps with planning how you're going to use those funds, funds as well. And it also affects redistricting in the state. So those are some, four reasons why, you know, you should really respond to the census. And so also, I don't want to make, I want to make sure that I don't leave anything out. There are different ways that you can respond this time. So you can respond online, you can respond by phone, you can respond traditionally by paper. And if you respond in any of those three ways, you don't have to worry about anybody knocking on your door at all. Okay? So around March, you should, of twenty twenty, the census is April first, twenty twenty, but around March twelfth, you should get an invitation to, to invite you to participate online and, you know, respond to the census. You'll get another invitation, you're going to get about four, you'll get another one, asking you to respond again. And so you can either respond by phone, by, through, online, or by paper. And so it, you can respond in as many as twelve languages as well. So by the fourth, you'll get four invitations. By the fourth invitation, they'll send you a paper survey. And so you can send in the paper survey, or you can still respond by phone or online. And so, again, if you respond in any of those ways, you don't worry, you won't have to worry about anybody knocking on your door. So if that does not happen, around May is when you'll see field workers out in the community and coming to your door and, you know, get, trying to get people to respond to the census. So that'll start from May until July. And so we, we just want to make sure that, you know, it's, it's convenient for you and you can do it without, you know, being bothered by someone coming out to your home. I know that people worry about safety and security. Our IT systems, cybersecurity are at standard and above standards. And also, I have to take a lifetime oath, as well as all census workers, a lifetime oath not to disclose any, any of your personal information. If I do, or any of my census coworkers, employees, any one of the census, we could get up to five years in prison and a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fine. So never been to jail, don't everyone go, don't have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So they take it very, very seriously. Also, we have some barriers, too, that we're facing. Some of the barriers include people not counting children five and under. And so we found that some of those reasons are they don't, sometimes people don't know where to count children because a small child may live with their grandparents, or their aunts, or uncles. So where do you count them, you know? We tell people to make sure that you count that child wherever they spend most of their time. So if they spend most of their time at grandmother's house, grandparents' house, that's where you count them at. So say they spend, you know, half the time at grandparents and half the time at their parents, you count them wherever they are on census day. So that's one of our barriers that we've had. Another is, another barrier is English-speaking, people, you know, that don't speak English. So that's another barrier as well. So we're working with organizations to, to assist in that area. In February, we, we try, we make sure we count everybody. So in February, there will be an operation called Group Quarters. And Group Quarters is an operation that works with entities that manage where people live, facilities where people live. And those are places like dormitories. Those are places like correctional facilities, homeless shelters, domestic violence shelters, places like that. We count people under bridges, we count people on campgrounds, we count people everywhere. So we work with a lot of organizations. So we're just, we're just asking everyone to, you know, lend a hand and spread the word. Also, Constitution Day is coming up on September seventeenth. So we're asking organizations, governments, to make sure that they promote it in some kind of way or some type of acknowledgement on their websites, or social media, or flyers, or something, or an event even. So that's coming up on, on September seventeenth. And I think that is about it. The only thing that we're asking is also, you know, if the trustees possibly could post something on your, your websites, if you can get the information out to your community. If you can think of, if everybody, anybody can think of any place we should be, please let us know. Because we'll make sure that we're there.
Do you have a template for us to put on, like, our webpage?
Absolutely. We have electronic materials that I can send you, and you can put it on your websites. We have prepackaged messages. I don't know if you have a Facebook page, or?
We do have.
Okay. So we have a banner that you can use for your website, a badge that has our logo and information. We have other materials to educate people about the census as well. And something I almost forgot is we have jobs. We have jobs, so I'll make sure that you get that information as well. So we have jobs, and we're hiring census field workers. And so that position pays sixteen dollars an hour. If you are a, if you apply as a supervisor, that's seventeen fifty. You can work part-time, you can work full-time. And we're asking people to, to respond and apply right away because it takes a while to get on board, really. And so, yes.
Sounds great. And I'm going to cut you off.
No, no problem.
Did you, because we do have that Expo coming up where we got a lot of our community. I don't know if you've heard us talking about it earlier, if you have people that can attend, like, Expos.
Absolutely.
It's, you can look it up online. It's, Joe, do you know where it is? Or anybody have that?
It's at Neomet, September.
Oh, Neomet?
October twenty-seventh, I believe.
October twenty-seventh, okay. We would love to be there. Those are the kind of partnerships we like, too. So, yeah.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth, okay.
Then you have to go through.
Neomet here.
Yeah.
And to get it, to reserve a location, contact the Ridgeway Chamber of Commerce?
Yep.
The Ridgeway Chamber of Commerce, okay.
You can probably go on their website, pull them up on Facebook, get the information you need, contact them, and then you're good to go. That, so I thought you'd like to know that. The second thing is you say invitations will be sent out. When you talk about invitations, you talk about like a postcard being sent out?
Like a postcard.
Okay.
You'll, everyone will get one in the mail.
Every?
Everybody will get one.
Everybody that's, you go through, what registration to get that, or?
Everybody, everybody. Throw it through the mail, send it to everybody.
How do they get, how do they get the addresses for that?
Through the mail.
Well, they, they, they work with post, they work with the post office, and they, you know, verify the addresses. So it's multiple ways that they verify your information. And so anyone can apply, you just have to be eighteen years of age, U.S. citizen. It's paid training. And so that's something that, you know, what, you know, anybody should consider. About, I would say maybe about three weeks ago, there were about a thousand positions that were available in Portage County alone. So I know that that number's changed, but that, that was about three weeks ago. So you work in your own communities, too. So you're not working outside of your own communities, you're working right in your own communities.
When do those jobs, jobs start and end?
Well, they start around February now because we, and, but I would tell people to start applying still now because they're, the first way was the address canvassers that were doing the verifications. So I would say probably around February till the end of July of twenty twenty. February twenty twenty to July twenty twenty.
Are they part-time or full-time positions?
They're both. You can decide what you want to, you can work five hours up to forty hours. It's up to you. You decide what you want to do.
I have a comment. The paper assures us that everything's confidential and stuff. However, I happen to know for a fact that there are two census blocks over on my street, Banville Road, that include a single residence. And so there are two people in the block. And so when you look at the data, you can tell, you know who, their names, and you can tell they are. So it isn't really confidential in that situation.
Explain that situation again.
If I have, everything's reported by census block, okay? If there's only one house in a, in the census block, and there are two people in there, one man, one woman, it's no mystery of who the data applies to.
But we're not going to, but we're not going to share your information.
Well, yeah, I download it and see it. I mean, all that information gets posted out there by census block. And if the census block is so small, then you can identify the people in the census block. And there are two of those out there on my one street. And I, you know, when I saw that, I was astounded because I wondered, like, who's watching these people, you know? I mean, it's just a loop around the house.
Is it census, is it census data that has their name?
It doesn't have their name, but if it's for two people in a census block, one's man, one's woman, it doesn't take a genius to figure out who it's about.
Okay.
You know, so.
So you're saying the block needs to be bigger than just?
Blocks needs to be bigger. There's a lot of blocks out there that are too small.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll mention that, I have a conference call tomorrow, so I'll make sure I mention that on our conference call.
Why, give her your address?
Yes. Yeah, and I can give you two instances, you know.
It's supposed to.
Fay, could you send me an email with the things for our website?
Absolutely.
Because you're a habit, so.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Just making things easier.
Is there any more questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Your man called on us today, and I want you to know he was very precarious, well-trained. And they have a sign in the front window and back window of the vehicle, so it's clearly identified.
Good. That's good to know, thank you so much. Yes, okay.
Question.
Yes, sir.
This is not a voluntary thing, right? If you don't send it in, what happens?
If you don't send it in, nothing, you don't go to jail or anything, so, you know. But, you know, we just say that it's your civic duty. It's your civic duty, just like it's your civic duty to vote. So it's, it's, it's important because of, you know, the funding dollars that your state will lose. So, you know, I would.
Somebody would come out if you don't respond.
If you don't respond, somebody will come out to your house, yeah.
They're not going to arrest you in thirty minutes?
But they're not going to, no, 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 no. They're just going to.
But I still don't want to respond.
Well, you don't have to respond.
If you put like a non-trespassing sign in the front of your driveway, would they go through that non-trespassing sign?
But you're a true American.
That question, I don't know, and I'll have to, I'll have to send you a response back.
No need, I'll just curious.
I'm not sure about that one.
So you trust the government?
You live here, I live here.
So, so, you know, and that is an issue. So that's why we were here talking, because these are entrusted voices right here. So you, you trust these gentlemen, I'm sure. So these are the trusted voices. I hope you do.
My daughters are tracing their ancestry, and we had the most fun with the census reports.
And, and that's.
Finding people.
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I will add this. Your information is protected for seventy-two years. So you're looking at census data up to nineteen forty. So the next dump of census information will be shown, the nineteen fifty census is coming out in two years. So if they do genealogy, they can look at some information from, you know, nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty census. Okay?
Fay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Taking care of this, this is a, definitely a civic duty. All right, with that, uh, new business. You have more new business?
No, that's the email we got from the website. Who brought one to talk about, I guess.
Oh, not that big a deal. I know you like certain responses in these types of situations, and you dig a little deeper.
Oh, this came to our, this came to our, yeah. Is this in, is this in my email? Did you pass this on to us? All right, yeah, I'll take care of it.
These are me to take care of their issues.
I'll take care of it.
All right, we will adjourn then. At eighteen thirty-seven.
Awesome.
I got busted out here, everyone.
Oh, no, please stay.
The others went across country, but hopefully they haven't finished, but they probably have. And I do, I'd like to read this through the next meeting, unless you think I need something to plug before then.
It don't matter whether you like it or not.
Yeah. It's coming, yeah.
No, it's just a group that they're choosing, and they're, they're two.
Thanks for.
Phases. That's it.
That's it.
Roger, thank you, Roger.
Oh, that's my question. Thank you for answering my question.
Mr. Shavano.
No, I didn't.
Thank you for that question. I wasn't taking that one. You weren't, I wasn't taking that one. I, you guys did a great job with that.
Nobody's perfect.
Yes, see, these minutes here that were signed today, I will email to our mentor tomorrow. So I don't know when.
Some of the questions.
Yeah, I, I, I wrote it in my computer and I look at it and I was going down my street, I saw it too. And there's one loop around one house on the outfield and then you go on up and then it's a loop around another house.
I had a complaint on your daughter.
Somebody is watching.
My daughter, oh, pardon me. Oh, wait.
Well, if.
They, they actually.
They report, we think, the forms come out.
And it was, you know, it's like it was coach pitch game. I didn't know.
Everything up in the, the census block, okay?
The block might be what?
It might be.
It's pretty tough, definitely. Well, no, if, she was just there.
Be hard enough to identify the people in.
There was a boy at the back. She, she was safe behind it. It's coach.
Uh, it varies.
Coaching the outfield, that was coaching. Can you see me? Started going off yelling about.
Not even a whole yard, a house, you know, just around the house, not, not even a court, the whole property. That was the smallest one I saw. And then there's like, the other one has like the triangle inside the path of the road, you know, path of the back and, and you know. So. That was a nature.
But the, but the coaching outfield.
Did he?
So, take it on in.
I could show you, yeah. I'll, I'll do a screenshot and email to you. And I pulled up and did a screenshot.
No, she's, yes, Joy was.
It was kinda spooky when I saw it. I said like, you know, I mean. My neighbors are watching them.
Oh, the coach from the outfield.
You know, I'm thinking like maybe they're witness protection. Maybe my neighbors are.
Then you're welcome to be watching them.
Yeah.
The guy, the guy took his girl, went back out. Had her tabbed around the.
What you can do is like if you go to the census.
She ended up being out. I guess, yeah, that's, that's pretty cheap.
Oh, I'll email you the link. It'll be on YouTube. I emailed the link for the other, I'll do the same thing as, once it's loaded up there.